Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 11th, 2008 meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. I'm going to ask Ms. Wright to take call the roll.
Mr. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Foot Newman?
Here.
Dr. Gladengi Lorenzo?
Here.
Ms. Hartree?
Here.
Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Mills?
Here.
Ms. Minnick?
Here.
Ms. Pick?
Ms. Regress.
Mr. Zakowski?
Present.
Mayor Higgins?
Present.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask if anybody in the public would wish to regret the school committee? Now is the time. Okay.
Wow.
Are there any announcements? Are they going to wait until one of you gets up there and addresses? Are there any announcements, school committee members?
No.
No. Okay. I'd like to have a Washington for the next school committee meeting on November 13th.
So move.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next is the highlight of our evening, which is the report of the elementary school reporters, and I believe our guests tonight are from the Bridge Street School.
It's funny, can we focus? That's like this was for us.
Oh. We can just talk?
Yeah, you can leave it or chicken or anything.
Whoops.
Chicken or whatever.
Chicken or whatever.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Desiree. And this is the Leeds School News. On Wednesday evening, December 3rd, the second of three Math Nights sponsored by NEF, our PTO, gave attendees a look into the continuum of math learning that is present in the Math Investigations Program used throughout grades, faith, and... The skills used at kindergarten level are built upon to increase student understanding as each year our grade gains math knowledge. The games practiced at home in first grade impact math learning at third grade. This math knowledge is growing in elementary school, and we all have a role to play, students, teachers, and parents. Several teachers participate in providing materials and examples of the math used across the grades. The new and revised Math Investigations Curriculum provides a continuum of math learning that was evident in the grade displays. Parents were very impressed by the participation and exhibition of learning offered by the following teachers: Ms. Subox, Ms. Mackenzie, Ms. LaJoy, Ms. Covington, Ms. McFarland, Ms. Munster, Ms. Nagle, Ms. Wood, Ms. Klein, and Ms. Christeck. The idea of using and thinking about multiple strategies in math is a concept that may not be congruent with conventional thinking about developing multiple strategies can only produce a more flexible thinker across subject areas. Thanks for all who presented and attended this night. The next Math Night is February 3rd, 2009, and all Leeds families are invited. On Thursday, December 18th, grades 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 will be presenting winter music for our listening pleasure at Leeds School. The concert will begin at 9:10 a.m., and it will be in the cafeteria. You will also be able to hear our new school sound system that has recently arrived. This was my hospital with a generous donation from our first grade teacher, Ms. Cam Munster. Thank you, Ms. Munster. Please come to hear our beautiful singers and musicians. Jackson Street News. Our whole school has built a wall of strength, which is in the wall of the gym. Every student and staff member was given a piece of red construction paper and a shade of brick. All these bricks, students and staff wrote what their strengths are or what they're going to do. We discovered that there are many talents in this school, and that it is a very strong wall. We invite you to come see. We have an annual tradition at Jackson Street of the Giving Tree. Thanks to cotton tree service, we have another beautiful classroom standing in our front hallway. We asked for donations of candy, boxed food, and gloves, hats, and scarves that we use to decorate the tree. Giving Tree is up for December and January, and all these families donated to North Hampton's Reliability Fund. Please feel free to bring in donations and to see it too. We have eggs for sale on Friday mornings. Every spring, there are classrooms that incubate eggs and hatch chicks. When the chicks get too big for the classrooms, Miss Ebits, fourth grade teacher, takes them to her house in the country. She uses lots of chickens now and gets lots of eggs from them. Her students sell the eggs, $3.50 per dozen, from 8:30 to 9:00 a.m. on Fridays when the proceeds go to the Heifer Project. We'd love to sell you some. Bridge Street School News. The chess club started this month with a chess master, Mr. Tony. There are 23rd, 4th, and 5th graders leaving after school on Mondays to practice their chess game and learn new strategies. We hope to have a chess tournament again in spring. Mrs. Hannah is running a geography club on Tuesdays after school for 4th and 5th graders. The members are really enjoying exploring the world through the internet, and we'll be having a geography meeting in spring. The fourth grade literary magazine history, The Children, are heard at work collecting artwork and writing for students around the building. The first issue should be out soon. We had a great concert on Wednesday by the high school course. It was awesome. Second, 3rd, and 4th graders are benefiting from a group of volunteer parents who are providing math enrichment for three days a month. Small groups are meeting and challenging their brains with numbers and calculations.
Did you tell us who you were?
Laura.
Hi, Laura. We'd like for people not to know who's talking.
Our third annual community calendar is hot off the press. It shows photos of our classes at various communal landmarks like the Look Park Train, the Smith Vocational Farm, and the Glacial Eridic Boulder on our school grounds. We thank our photographers, Lou Duval and Valerie Tompkins, and all of our friends who helped create this project. The PBTA bus has become a familiar sight at our school with regular stops right at our front door during the day. Family members, friends, and neighbors are taking advantage of this extended public transportation. About five of our classes have already taken the PBTA on field trips in Warhol Lane, thanks to all of our advocates who made this route a reality. Our classes are thinking of ways to raise the spirits of others during the holiday season. They Simoroski Kindergarten Class is sponsoring a canned goods drive for the Survival Center. Ms. Osborne's students are cooking for the cot shelter. Ms. Desmond's fourth grade and others are creating cards and letters and collecting items for trip station to wife and home. These projects are activities for us to use, are developing skills and authentic ways to help others. The news for JFK. Last week, the PTO put a huge amount of time and energy into the JFK Book Fair. Lots of books were sold, and all, lots of books were bought and sold all week. Thursday night was family night, and when there was a great turnout for a visiting author, refreshments, and exciting Dress a Potato as your Favorite Book Character contest. The best part? The PTO donated all profits from the book fair, JFK teachers, in the form of books from their wish list. Thank you, PTO. Also, last week, the entire 6th grade went to hear the Soledo Gospel Choir in UMass Final. It was an outstanding performance enjoyed by all. Did you know that physical education at JFK is nothing like it was when you went to school? Right now, students are learning how to kayak, swimming, volleyball, getting a shape in the skating rink, fitness center, learning how to swim, and even choreographing and performing their own dances. As soon as it snows, they'll be outside learning how to cross country skiing in the snow machine. We do let you guarantee a good time having a JFK dance performance at the Winter Concert next Wednesday at 7:00. Be sure to come early if you're on good seats. It's always packed in the house.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both, Bridge Street School students. So this is Lauren. Tell me your name again.
Desiree.
Desiree. So thank you, Lauren Desiree. Okay. The next item on the agenda would be the high school reporter. She's not here. She has a coat and a coffee cup in there.
He is the youngest member on this class.
Okay. So I guess we won't do that. I'm wondering, maybe we could move up the Education Foundation grant donations?
I don't know.
Just come to the Bridge Street.
Right. I know you did, but we also have a person who's...
Oh, got it.
Not in the way here waiting. So why do Julie Ma? Do you want, are you staying for the, for the field trip for the year?
Yeah, they have a vacation.
Let's, let's...
Are you on me?
Yes.
This time, I'm not going to make the mistake of taking the microphone.
So this is the report on the Bridge Street School Extended Learning Time Grant.
Right. Hopefully, you got something in your pocket about, yeah, which is basically the overview of what we've done. Bridge Street worked for about two and a half years exploring the idea of having an expanded school day, which meant that we were going to increase the school day from six hours a day to anywhere to seven or seven and a half hours a day. And the purpose, the reason why we were doing that is because the, myself and the faculty felt that with the demands of education and the needs of students, it was really challenging for us to do it all in the time that we had. We wanted to have special subjects like art and music. We wanted to have hands-on learning. We wanted to have, make the modifications that certain children need for the classroom. We want to spend over an hour on teaching math every day, over an hour teaching In the Flame of Dark every day. And it was becoming pretty challenging to find out how we were going to meet all of those needs. The fact is that it's still pretty challenging to figure out how we can do social studies and science on a regular basis. And certainly, every day is, it's not possible if you do it every other day. So that's one of the reasons why we were excited about the opportunity to take a look at expanding the day. It's obviously a very popular notion in some circles, not a terribly popular notion in other circles. Most of the experience of the other school districts that have tried this, it seems that it has worked especially well in schools where there is not a lot of childcare available in the, in the local area, and parents need a lot of childcare. That doesn't have to be the case in North Hampton. So we spent the first year basically talking to parents, presenting information, looking at possible external partners, like the Hitchcock Center or the Enchanted Circle Theater. Superintendent and Linda Carrier were really helpful in setting up possibilities with us to work with other organizations outside of the school. And some of that was spun off into a little bit of practice in the after-school program the following year. The next year, the teachers and I really spent going over our standard on our curriculum, our NCAS results, and figuring out if we did have the extra time, how would we actually use it? And you'll see on the packet that what we decided was that one of our strongest needs was to really help children think critically through writing so that they could write And we also had a lot of in-service training from the Department of Education and the Mass 2020 that were supporting this initiative. Teachers were able to go out and see some of the schools where it was actually working. And I would say, by and large, for the faculty, we had a fairly decent amount of support in the end when we finally polled the faculty. It wasn't 100% support, but it was probably about 75% support from the faculty and teachers for continuing with this idea as a concept. We did not get more than 60% support from parents anytime we polled them. And really, the problem that I see, well, it wasn't a problem, but the reality for us at Bridge Street was that many parents did not have a strong need for childcare. And many parents had, in fact, may change their, their own schedules to be available for children, their children after school, while their children were in elementary school. Also, North Hampton is very rigid in opportunities, and people already had a lot of self-selected opportunities that they wanted to participate in. And there were other people who really felt that six hours was plenty, and plenty of time for children to be learning in a school setting, and that more than that, they didn't feel would be that useful for their children. I think we could have made it fun, but I totally understand where they were coming So we have, really, we had it originally put down as a target, 80% family support, because we didn't want to displace families from Bridge Street to do a project that didn't make the project worthwhile. It was going, it was always intended to be something that would benefit the families at Bridge Street. So when it became really clear that that wasn't going to be the case, we had to postpone, you know, going for the final grant. I think in hindsight, I'm really glad we had that opportunity. We learned a lot. It really gave us a chance to look over our schedule, tweak it, get better at it. We're already implementing most of the curricular ideas that we had come up with. It's still hard to figure out how we're going to find enough time to do writing, but we're working on that. And I think for, well, certainly, the economy at this point, it would, it would be hard to really have the hope that the, that the Commonwealth could really, you know, maintain the level of growth that they were hoping for in the beginning at this point. As far as I know, they are not accepting new applications until the economy improves. So I do think down the road, for the, for the listening audience, this is an idea that will come. I really think that it will have to come sooner or later, but I think it's not, it's not appropriate time for North Hampton. And if it does come, we're all ready, because now we have planned everything. So I'm really grateful to have, have the opportunity, actually, to have looked at it. And I think we gained a lot from it. And, like, people have questions?
Actually, it's just a comment, because, do you know, I went to many of the meetings. Lee's also joined me, and, you know, one of the things that did come of this was, was those meetings were absolutely powerful, bringing together and discussing all issues in education. It wasn't just expanded learning time, but lots of things came to the surface. And, and it was great. We brought parents and community members and teachers and administrators and school committee members coming together to talk about these issues, and it really provided a really good forum, and I found it really helpful.
That's great to hear.
And thank you for putting that all together.
That's great.
Because, you know, even if it doesn't work out, I think the process was very valuable, and we don't have to lose that. So, thank you.
Thank you. That's my, that's my feeling, too. It was good to have that forum. Any other questions?
Just, you know, hearing about it over the years and reading about it, it's a huge amount of effort and energy, and I ended up hoping, when I knew what the, you know, what would happen at the end, but wishing the story had ended up differently, because it sounded very exciting. You know, I appreciate how sort of philosophical you are.
Well, I think that it's just, you know, I tend to be an early adopter.
That's true.
And this would probably have been a good time for me to be a little bit behind the eight ball. But I do think that'll happen eventually. And like I said, I told my faculty was, even if it doesn't happen now, I always like to be prepared. And honestly, I really think that something like this has to happen in education, as long as we can put in a plug for more funding for education and stop trying to pay for education on property tax. That's quite political now. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions?
I would, I would just echo what the other, what the other committee member said. Having kids at Bridge Street School and having the opportunity to sit in as a parent and as a committee member, I think you did a very good job over the last few years of investigating some of the key points and issues that were coming up from the teacher's point of view and from the parent's point of view. So I, I do appreciate your hard work and diligence. I was a little, you know, as I look at the numbers, you sent home the letter, and the percentage of families that responded, I was a little disappointed with, just with over 50% of parents really weighing in. I think there's still an opportunity to get out there and reach those parents and have their voice heard, as far as voice. So when I look at the numbers, 60 to 40%, you know, we have a hard time getting people to come out and vote in general elections for a public office. And I think this is just another one of those examples where, you know, we really have to get out there and get to the base of all the people, really tell them that their voice really makes a difference and matters, because I think these numbers could be different if everybody came out.
Well, I actually considered using our connected to get the vote, so I could get every single family, but it was pretty, it was impossible to give them all the information to be able to vote in just that little short phone call, so I decided against it.
You couldn't have kept calling back with...
Oh, yeah. I would have definitely got a yes vote. But the other thing is that I would have probably even voted again to, or done a different kind of outreach to get the rest of the families if the numbers hadn't reflected the same. We did the vote three different times, and all the numbers ended up coming in relatively the same. So I kind of felt that probably it was as accurate as we were going to get at that point. But yes, thank you, Pat. Thanks for your support.
And Duncan White?
Yeah, I, I found the forums really helpful to sit and hear parents' point of views, and made me think about things in a different way than I had. And I think, you know, it was, it was one look and one effort that didn't, doesn't really have a downside to it, made people examine their values and what they want their kid to get at school, and I sort of saw people thinking about those things. And it, you know, I think it's something that we just have to keep as an open chapter in the way that there's a lot of feeling now that, you know, the worry of teaching for the test, and I've heard, you heard that a lot there, I hear a lot from parents, and I'm hoping that that settles down some, and that in a few years, because the enrichment piece of this, the group work, the, the expanded kind of way that you can do learning sounded really exciting, and I think people were afraid it would be more of the same drill stuff as opposed to something different. And there's no model really to show them how it could be different, so I think there was a lot of fear.
I agree. I think I would also say that one of the benefits has been for us at Bridge Street, because of the conversation, we have, we have now some things going on in school with parent volunteers and others that we wouldn't have had before, because people didn't want to lose some of the good parts, even though they didn't want to have the day go on so long. So that was a difference. And it was nice not to have to be talking about it much.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we're going to, now we're moving to the NEF grant donation.
Hi, Cora.
Hi. This is the fall cycle of 2008 Small Drive Awards for North Hampton Community Foundation, and there are 15 grants that were awarded for a total of $24,511. And these were awarded, I'm going to just give a very brief description of each grant. Ryan Road received a grant called Inspiring Young Writers, written by and to be conducted by Marty Riddle, Paula Dervin, Cindy Barry, and Sarah Simmons, with the goal of inspiring students to write fluently and focusing on creative. Ryan Road also received a grant for kindergarten and the Bauhaus. Kindergarteners and their fourth grade learning buddies will explore the study of form and design using teaching styles from the Bauhaus Art School in Germany. Jackson Street will receive a grant for an Enchanted Circle Theater Arts Residency. Holly Gacy, Hall Welshman, Kathleen Braden, and Mark Dean. The Enchanted Circle Theater artists will spend three to four months working with fifth graders, and they will research, write, improvise, produce, and perform plays for local public performances. Jackson Street also receives a Rhythms of the World grant by Kim O'Connell and Leslie Farlow, in which two artists from the Bambi Dele, dancers and drummers will work with 5 students on songs, dances, and instruments of West Africa. Another grant at Jackson Street called Smile Photography and Bookmaking by Maria Del Carmen Garcia, Mary Ellen Reed, and Carmelie Jones, which will integrate photography and literacy for students. Families with power at Jackson Street with Mary Cowie, Kim Gerald, Janet Numan, and Norma Cardona. This project uses basic concepts from the National Writing Project, with local family leaders modifying them for our community. Playing and Drumming Artist Residency at Jackson Street with Mary Cowie, and Mary Dele Garcia, and Leslie Farlow. Experienced student drummers and professional drummers will teach 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders and families during in- and after-school activities. Jackson Street, together with North Hampton High School, will do a project called For Whom the Bell Tolls. Susan Ebits from Jackson Street, 4th grade, and Suzanne Strauss, an English teacher at the high school. Let's see. Suzanne's students at the high school and Susan's 4th graders at Jackson Street will partner, will study Emily Dickinson together, and the two school groups will visit the museum together, and using Dickinson's portrait as a model as their own at the very same Creating a school garden at Jackson Street, Mary Bates, Mel, Mary Ellen Reed, Jen Reed, and Regina, Regina Sevesta. The goal of this project is to create a school garden that functions as a viable classroom. Dance, ballet, drum at JFK with Julie Spencer Robinson. 6th graders will learn Latin American and West African dance from native teachers, and this will complement a varied approach to teaching about Latin America and Africa. Also at JFK, there'll be a middle school science fair. The science exposition will be held over two days inside the school, and afterwards, the PTO will sponsor an evening reception, which prizes are given to all the students. Florence Learning Center will have a project called Monumental History of Pioneer Valley. Randy Gordon and Jason Scavato. They'll choose a town and research it. They'll visit monuments and create a webpage and a book. Also at Florence Learning Center, there'll be a theater improv project, theater improvisation games, and this project will focus on pre-African-American female artists. At the high school, Rags to Stitches, enriching Middle Eastern curriculum by Ernie Brill with Cheryl Jappin. As part of a unit on Islamic and Middle Eastern literature, the students will create their own handmade paper, books, and pornography. And lastly, the Science Olympiad at the high school with Susan Bates. AP Chemistry students will attend the local chemistry Olympiad competition in March. That's held at the Jefferson Massachusetts with the prospect of sending individuals onto the national and international Olympic. There you go. There you go.
Great. What a broad range of movements. Any questions?
Well, I have my, another question. I have my annual, or my annual thank you to the community for their generous donations because without them, NEF wouldn't be able to make these awards. And all the money that is raised comes from the residents of North Hampton. I love them. And so I want to thank you all for those contributions so that we can do these things. It's great projects. Thank you.
Doctor Lewis, doctor Lewis.
I'd like to say the same. I just say that as a superintendent, I go through the buildings and I get to see firsthand what these grants do for our schools. And it is just wonderful. Children benefit so greatly. And then I also get the privilege of sitting on the board. They are wonderful people who donate the money, but then equally as wonderful are the members of the board, the NEF board who sit and think of our ways to help us out in our schools. So thank you very much for all your.
I also just wanted to recognize all the teachers that are involved, both in these grants and ongoing grants and even grants that didn't get awarded, and recognize their creativity and their efforts.
Thank you.
Do you want to stay there?
Love to stay. I'm inviting you.
Stay after some.
With Nancy Athens, and I think you're both, and we're talking about a program, foreign exchange program.
Yes, Nancy called me and explained to me that Julie shared with her a foreign exchange program that she would like to introduce to the high school. And Nancy is very interested in opening it up to the high school. So both of them would like to speak to you about the program. We don't have any policy that says it has to be accepted by the school committee, but it is a different foreign, a different kind of program. I did share with you the information and before I give approval to Nancy, I did want to let you know about it.
Before we do that, I do think I need a motion to accept the gift of the grants from the, from NEF. I apologize, I shouldn't have done that. So can we?
So, Ruth.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close with our gratitude. Thank you. Okay, now on to the second issue. I have a question. If we have to approve our state travel, wouldn't we have to approve this?
No, because it's our policy, and I'm not sure, I have a copy of the policy. I'm not sure if Karen gave you a copy of the policy. Our policy says foreign students who wish to attend the North Hampton Public Schools must be enrolled in a recognized foreign exchange program. They must meet all requirements of the program.
And our students are not going?
Well, this is to have students cuddle here?
No, it's mutual.
That's why, that's a good question, but we don't need to deal with that. So, tell us about.
All right. First, I just want to clarify that this is not in my capacity with the North Hampton Education Foundation, but rather in my capacity at the Institute for Training and Development, which is my day job. So first of all, I want to make it clear that this exchange does not, would not incur any charges for the school system or for the students involved. I thought that might be.
That's definitely.
And secondly, that it would involve travel to the Netherlands by two students and one teacher from the high school. And the students who are selected from the high school, enough efforts would be made or one of the qualifications of those students would be that they are students that might not have this kind of opportunity otherwise. I wanted to give you just a brief overview of the whole project because this exchange with the high school is part of a larger project. And that project has to do with three countries, Spain, the United States, and the Netherlands. And priorization, ITD received a grant from the US State Department to conduct a three-way high school exchange. And the way that that has been broken down is, and each country can send eight students. So the way that exchange is broken down is that Spain, there's a school in Spain that will be partnered with a school in the United States, actually Amherst Regional. And there's a school in Holland that will be paired with an American school. So eight students from Spain will travel to the United States, eight students from the Netherlands will travel to the United States, and eight students from the United States will travel to one of those two countries, four to Spain and four to the Netherlands. And only two will come from the Empire? Yes. The program, the Netherlands-US Exchange originally was with an Islamic high school, private high school in eastern Massachusetts. The focus of this project is immigration or immigrants, minorities, and integration. The vast majority of immigrants, minorities in the Netherlands are Muslim, either from Morocco or Turkey. And that's why originally we paired the Dutch school, which is, which is a majority-minority school, with the Islamic school because the populations would be more similar. After we did that pairing, we were asked also to include a public school. And that's why it's gotten a little bit complicated and smaller. So now we're pairing the Dutch school with Al-Nor, the eastern Massachusetts school, for one week and with North Hampton for the second week. Is that true? Yeah. I have a calendar of activities. Can I put that up here? That has, is, will give you an overview. It's double-sided, so side A is the program of the Dutch students to the US. Side B is the program for the American students in the Netherlands. So as you can see, the Dutch group would, is planning, or if all goes well, would arrive in the United States on February the 18th and stay until March 10th, with two weeks being school-based of the three weeks that they're here, one week in eastern Massachusetts, and one week here in North Hampton. We would ask for a teacher to be kind of in charge of the activities while they're here in North Hampton. And also, we want a North Hampton teacher to escort the students when they go to the Netherlands, the two students who travel. We've identified one, a teacher to do that, Suzanne Strauss, but she's still thinking about whether she can be away from her family for that long.
And is it the same teacher here and traveling?
What'd you say?
Is it the same teacher that would be overseeing when the students are here and travel?
Travel.
That's the premise, okay. How many students? So eight students are going to come over and they'll stay in Eastern Mass for a week or a little bit more.
And practice.
Right. But then they'll do homestays there.
That's right.
And then they're going to come here and there will be only two North Hampton students.
That's right.
And the rest will be, the other six will be Eastern Mass.
No, all eight will be. There'll be eight Dutch students.
Right, but there are eight American students too, right?
Right, but four American students are going to Spain, so they don't, we don't really have anything to do with those guys tonight.
Eight total. I was thinking it was eight free children.
Right.
No, eight total. So two Al-Nor students and two North Hampton students.
That's right.
Okay. And then, so you have to find homes for how many students here?
Eight. Eight Dutch students.
Is that, is that going to be problematic, do you think?
I don't think so. I think the 900, you know, there would be enough interest generated. And then I think that you can go out to community families, other families that don't have students in the school as well that would be interested in keeping exchange students.
That sounds really interesting.
And your program keeps, it's very different from a traditional exchange program. The time is a little long in terms of the three weeks that the students would have to go over. One of them does happen to fall during the April vacation though, so they would, they would miss two weeks of school, which we'd have to come up with some sort of plan. But I also think that it's quite an opportunity for kids to be able to go over. And they're getting such rich culture going over, where they're going and, you know, going to the school. So we have them keep journals or, you know, do a project based for the rest of school or for their classes. It would be, I think, a wonderful learning opportunity. We did talk about it, and the reason we're here so quickly is because of timing, because February is coming. But we need a teacher to be able to go over with them. That's one of the things that we've talked about. And, you know, selection of the students and parent support as well, so.
How are you selecting students?
It has to be an open competition. So we talked about focusing on sophomores and juniors, and anybody could apply. There would be a preference for people who hadn't traveled to Europe before and for kids who were, since the theme is immigrants, minorities, and integration, we would prefer students who are either immigrants or minorities or both. And they would also, strong candidates would also be people that were very active in the school and in the community, especially in this theme if possible. And gender balance to some extent.
So there'll be an essay question or a form that they'll fill out or?
Both, yeah.
And who will make the determination of who gets chosen?
The school will be asked to put together a selection committee of three to five people. It actually could include a community member as well, but it should include at least the teacher advisor who's going to be involved and then a few other people. One of the other possibilities with this is to have some of the Al-Nor students come to North Hampton at the same time and vice versa.
Yeah, that'd be really interesting. Just wondering why you wouldn't have a senior included?
That's a good question. The reason is, I mean, we could do that if there was, if the school or you all expressed a strong preference, but one of the ideas with a project like this is to establish an institutional linkage. And since the seniors won't be around much longer, that wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be as strong. So you never know what might happen in the future. And if you have the same students there and they're still communicating with the students in the Dutch school, there's kind of more potential for building off of that.
Will this be an ongoing yearly thing? Is that, or is this just a one-time grant?
It's just a one-time grant.
Oh, with the new Secretary of State, Mason. Having gone on a trip with ITD a couple of years ago to Lithuania and having met with ITD groups now, I can't even think back when I met with the first group, when I ran a daycare center in Amherst and on into groups that come here to look at local government. They, your organization does really good work and really is a bridge-building organization. Like, you know, I really haven't seen, I really think our students would benefit so much. I think it'd be just a great opportunity for them. And I really like the idea of focusing on a kid or kids that this isn't necessarily an opportunity that they might have. I think that'd be great. So I would endorse it 100%. And I would suggest that we take a vote in case one has needed what would be recorded. And if one wasn't needed.
Then what's the worst?
It will be in the record book for all posterity and exercise. But I think we should.
Then they don't need to come back.
Right, I think we should just take a vote and support. And I would entertain a motion saying that we approve of this participation of the high school in the ITD US program. What is it, what are you calling it? What's the name of this?
The SUN Youth Program, Spain-US-Netherlands Youth Program.
The SUN Youth Program. So if somebody wanted to make such a motion, which I think this would have just did. And this is only second, but then. Do you have more questions or any discussion on this?
Would it be possible, do you know, or have a school committee meeting while they're there? It would be great to have them come and.
Oh, that's a great idea.
When, when are, what, when are the dates?
February 18.
Maybe on March the 5th?
No.
No. It's the second Thursday.
The 2nd Thursday. On February 19th?
Is that the 2nd Thursday?
No. They're from one Thursday that, but they're not in Frankfort. They miss you on both sides.
Even for the city cats, maybe.
Maybe a curriculum.
I think we could maybe set up a reception.
Sure, if this committee gets together for something.
We can talk to.
Anytime in this.
We can talk.
We have a poker game.
I wish no votes were taken.
I wish no votes were taken.
Yeah, but you're playing on the money play.
Yeah, right. Are they going to fight it?
I think this is just absolutely wonderful. And I absolutely couldn't bear the thought of us passing it up, the opportunity. And I would hope that what would be built in, that the people who go, students who go, would have an opportunity to present, I don't know what, photos, video.
Absolutely, yes.
Back to a bigger group.
When they come back?
Yeah.
Well, actually, one of the, one of the things that we've discussed and is kind of integral to this project is that the students develop what we're calling a collaborative project, which can be a work of art, media, literature, you know, literature. And that the American kids and the Dutch kids throughout the whole process of this exchange will work on this project together, you know, while they're together and while they're apart. And so at the end, we'll have a product. And that's, you know, something that we can make available.
Nice, yeah.
I like that you're going to visit the center.
That's great.
Want to take that vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Great.
Thank you. I hope this is the first of many.
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, we'll talk to the Secretary of State. Next is a report on the Commonwealth Development Grant. This is Gloria Santana and Mr. Chris Spicer are here to report to us.
Hi there.
Hi.
I want to thank you for the opportunity for giving us, speaking today. I'm here with Chris Spicer and actually Joy Winnie. I'm Gloria Santana. I'm actually proud to be a resident of North Hampton, an employee at the Liver Management Workplace Education Program at UMass. And I am the project director for the Older Worker in the Education Industry Program. It is part of the Workforce Competitiveness Trust Fund. That fund is through a grant from the Commonwealth Corporation and the funds are given to us by the governor and the state legislature. Through this program, it's unique in that it has a partnership with many other entities, employers, North Hampton Public Schools and your unions, Smith College and two locals, Smith Folk, SEDEXO, the food service workers and their union, UFCW, the Franklin Hampshire Regional Unemployment Board in the Career Center, UMass Amherst, and actually Maureen Carney sits in on our meetings. And it's a unique partnership with the only one in the state, first of all, it was funded for the Older Worker Grant, and we're the only ones in the state that has this unique union management sitting together, making decisions, designing this program and guiding this program for work, non-teaching employees. So 97% of your 94 employees have participated in this program. It began in June of 2007 and it ends in June 2009. This program brings together training courses, career coaching, educational, other educational opportunities, which I love Chris Spicer to talk about. You have been giving these materials, and I want to bring your attention to this beautifully colored material here. It advertises the Career Pathways Fair. When I did one of the programs back way back when called Bay State Works, we did one of these programs and Career Pathways Fair. It's so successful that we're doing two. We're doing the first one at Smith College in January 22nd, and we're doing the second one at North Hampton High School February 18th. And I do encourage any non-teaching employee out there who's watching, as well as any of you, to please come and join us during that day. The idea of these grants is to re-energize and revitalize people's interest in their work, to give them educational opportunities, to help their workday be more lively, to help them do their job a little bit better. I was told the story at Smith College, and Chris has wonderful stories, but I've told a story at Smith College where an actual employee who's over 45, first time he ever did computer training, and he was giggling at work. He was so happy. So these are the wonderful stories that we love to hear about employees giggling. And before Chris gets up here to talk to you a little bit about this program, I also want to say that most of your 94 employees have taken advantage of this program multiple times. So it's. So it's not just they can only take one program, but they can take computers, they can take supervisory, they can do career coaching. And I do encourage them to take multiple opportunities. And the other thing about our program is the partnership decided early on that we just didn't want to have this be available for North Hampton Public Schools and this is Smith College and this is Smith Folk, but open it off, open to all of you so that there could be a collaboration between the employees and a more enriching experience when you meet other people from other employers and other situations. I do have to thank, and I'm very happy about the wonderful leadership that Susan Wright, David Patno, Donna Lawrence, and Maureen Carney have provided as part of this partnership. But a special thank you and notice needs to go up to Donna Lawrence. Her initiative and extra effort is extremely impressive and is deeply appreciated by everybody in the partnership and especially by the administrative staff. So at this time, I want to introduce you to Chris Spicer and then Joy, and then we can take any questions you might have. Chris Spicer.
Thanks. Let's see, you've got a flyer in the packet there that looks like this one with the little person in the sign. Gives you a sample of some of the courses. We offer coursework in three primary areas, computer, which Gloria referred to, and that includes not only just beginning computer and basic technical skills, but also writing on computer. In fact, Joy and I are working together right now in a program where you can combine the technical skills with the actual writing skills. Leadership skills is the second category. I lead those workshops. We did a wonderful group last spring with 10 or 11 custodial and clerical workers. And then again this fall with cafeteria workers. We have a great time. It's a wonderful chance to look at communication issues, conflict management issues, organization issues. And then finally, workplace safety, which primarily was concentrated in an all-day professional development day we did on Election Day over at Bridge Street School. We had some presenters from doing talks on back safety from Corey Dickinson Hospital, accident prevention and so forth. It was a great, wonderful, and apparently first ever coming together of all the clerical and custodial and cafeteria staff in one place. So I think they appreciate it, they expressed appreciation for the presentations, but they also expressed appreciation for just coming together in the same place and being able to hear each other's comments and hear each other's voices and compare notes and have that community conversation. Finally, there's a set of, so that was, did I say three? A fourth set of workshops, which is on a second flyer called Professional Development Workshop Series. Those are led by our career coach, Carrie Hemonway, who's an employee of the Career Center. And you can see sample topics there. Those were ones offered this fall, we'll have another set in the spring. And those are short, little, two-hour workshops. We're always playing with, of course, how to fit all these great opportunities in the time available that the staff have, because there was always a little worry that, yeah, but we can't get our work done back at the, back at the job. So that's, that's an overview of the programs we do. Oh, and then the other piece of paper there on career coaching, Carrie also does one-on-one coaching and just professional development coaching with people at their own desire. It's confidential, it's one-on-one, and she discusses issues and ideas and present issues and future issues with employees. So that's a great opportunity that a number of employees take advantage of. So that's it. Let me ask Joy, we, we commend her, Joy is one of our star learners, because she's, she was in our leadership course last spring, she's in our writing on computer course now, professional development day, so she's just had a lot of experiences and good stories. Joy, want to say a few words, tell a good story?
That's not exactly true. I got nominated because nobody else wants to get in front of the screen. And they all thought I was doing it, so whatever.
We open up here like, gosh, Joy.
I want to know if you big old work.
All the time. All the time. I cry, no one thinks I, you know, doesn't go anywhere. I started in the courses with boning up on my word proficiency. And I found, I did, just opened up a whole world that we actually convinced the group to do an advanced word program for us in central office, a lot of us, Donna, Wendy, myself, and so forth. And you just can't learn enough about word. We were in the writing class the other night with Bob, our word teacher, and Chris was there, and Chris was taking notes.
Absolutely.
He's learning. So it's just, it's such a big integrated program. And then we took the Excel and the advanced Excel classes. And all of this comes together to make us more proficient and productive in our daily jobs. We use it all the time. We're constantly on the computers. Our computers are up from the minute we walk into the office to the minute we shut down. We're always generating reports for you, for the superintendent, for the entities that we work with. Excel, we're constantly looking at our budget and our line items and our, you know, where we're at from day to day. So all of it's been very, very helpful. I did take the supervisor of course, and I really, I, the only problem I have with this whole thing is the age quota. I just don't want to think of myself as being old.
Experienced.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Say it whatever way I want to say it. But other than that, I, the program's been wonderful. And again, the safety day that we had at Bridge Street, it was, it was a very good experience. I got my drivers there, we had custodians, and everybody was together. And we all knew collaboratively that we were all there for the same reason. And it worked out of, the mayor came and visited us, and we had a good time. And we did a lot of laughing at that. And it's just a good way to learn, being with your peers, and it just gives you that calm and grounded, not only that, but it's a, it's a good base. If I get stuck on something, I'll go down, I'll see Donna and Wendy, say, okay, remind me how we do this, because along with this age thing comes along the memory thing. So, you know, reinforcement's a good thing to have with a lot of people, so. That's it, and it's a good program, and I hopefully will continue it.
Great. Thanks.
I just wanted to let the school committee know that what we've tried to do is provide a lot of professional development to a segment of our workforce that hasn't typically been addressed. We're always talking about professional development for our teachers and our aides, and this was an opportunity to be in a grant that would provide professional development for our custodians, our clericals, and our food service workers. So it's almost 100 workers that have taken part in some way, these courses. I really want to, again, publicly thank David Pomerantz and Mike Demon have been instrumental, and Greg Kohan have been instrumental in involving the custodial unit. And Donna Lawrence in my office has really taken the brunt of the administrative work associated with this grant, off of me and onto her. And she's been kind of the lead person coordinating it, particularly among the clericals and the food service workers. So it's really been a cooperative effort. And the thing that I've really enjoyed about it is that we are working with Smith College and we're working with Smith Folk. And it's been really great to sit in on meetings with a lot of the food service and maintenance staff at Smith College. So it's been a wonderful grant, and Gloria and Chris are just so enthusiastic and so organized. It's really been, it's really been a great opportunity. So, you know, it's going to end in June, we're sorry to see it go, but it's been, it's been great. And it's really provided a lot. And we just realized we'd never really checked in and really made a public presentation about what we've been doing, so.
If I could just say one more thing, just this is a political plug. Unfortunately, it's one of the first things that was cut through the governor's budget and the state legislator cut it as well. So again, the unique, the unique thing that the Commonwealth Corporation does is provides funding for staff, people who never get training. And this is huge. So I'm just putting in that plug out there for anybody who's listening to contact the state legislators and to contact the governor and to please ask this to be put back into the budget so somebody else can get the opportunity. So, any other questions?
I just had a comment, which is that this is, I think it sounds like a wonderful, I'm glad you came and presented to us, it sounded like a really wonderful grant, program that we were able to take advantage of. And I think it's good for workers of all ages, not just our older workers, of which I, if I worked for the civil department, I would be in that.
Just, just, just.
Yes, just. But I think it's, it's not, not only important because you're providing skill training in some areas that these workers may not have had access to previously, and also because you're providing professional development for groups of workers that typically don't get professional development opportunities, but also because I've learned over the years how important it is, people who work side by side for years, they're always busy, they're working. If they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're working, and they can spend those years and never find out something interesting about the person next to them. It's always so valuable to have just a little bit of time to learn something about someone else on a different level, and it makes that person more human, and you develop better connections, which can always serve to improve morale. So you've hit it, you've managed to improve morale for these employees on three separate levels, which is to be commended.
Thank you.
I only regret that City Side employees were not involved in this involvement.
Next time?
If the money comes back.
And we're over there at UMass Workplace Education.
Yeah. Well, we're working with UMass Workplace Education on the James House project.
That's right.
So there's other ways that we collaborate. Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For our employees.
Yes, thank you.
And you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. You too, Joy.
Joy, you seem like the call tomorrow is for.
That's not me, that's, that's a woman up there.
Unfortunately.
She hasn't learned that she should delegate that.
Oh, I tried, they won't take it. It was the first thing I tried to delegate.
Sorry.
First thing on my first week. Yeah, nobody wants it.
Okay.
It's like first week.
I did it for many years, I don't do it now. I had that job for, wait, wait a minute. Okay, we're going to move to the request from Hatfield regarding regionalization options. There's a letter in her packet?
Yes, and you actually have a corrected letter. And Mr. Darden, the superintendent of school, I had sent out the school committee and myself a letter inquiring whether or not North Hampton Public Schools would be interested in exploring consolidation or regionalization with Hatfield Public Schools. They are interested in moving very quickly with this. They are interested in exploring this. They have, they actually began the process of exploring regionalization. If you can read in the newspaper, you, I'm sure you have read that they began conversations, or he began conversations with his school committee well before his inquiry to us. And they intend on presenting, if they decide to regionalize, he intends on presenting a plan to the community for a vote by late February. So if we were to decide, or if you were to decide to pursue this, we would have to move fairly quickly in the process to try to make a decision, because we would have to move in their, you know, move quickly in their timeline. Having said that, I know that the mayor and Ms. Glang and Lorenz, as well as Mr. Flynn, know that I have recommended to our strategic planning committee that regionalization should be something that the North Hampton Public Schools should investigate, whether or not we should be investigating this as part of the parcel as with Hatfield in this timeline. I'm not sure we can fit within this timeline.
I'd be interested to hear what the, I mean, we had a discussion about this last month. I'm curious what your take and what other people's take is on how quickly the state is moving toward regionalization or consolidation of districts. I mean, I got, I was interested to hear him say that what he had heard from other groups was that it wasn't moving as quickly as what you and I had heard.
Right.
So I'm curious sort of if we have any better sense of what's coming down on us.
He's a test of cat over there. I don't, I don't know if he can talk yet, can you?
Okay.
But I, so I will only tell you what I can continue, I'll only tell you what I continue to hear, which is that, and Owen, I hadn't been to the, I hadn't been to the MASC conference? No, okay. I did go to the MASC conference, and I had Paul Revel, the commissioner, and they all spoke on regionalization and encouraged us to consider it. No one said, well, no, Paul Revel did say consolidation or regionalization is a direction that he would like the state to consider. And basically, small districts and those districts that don't have capacity, if you don't move in that direction, it's going to happen to you. But reasonably, so I think it's somewhere in between what we're hearing and what Mike is saying. I, I.
Who hasn't said anything?
On team, on camera. I think, you know, what I mean, what we're being told is that there's legislation that's going to be entered in, which will be, that the state's going to come out, evaluate, evaluate each district for capacity, central office capacity. If we're unable to meet that capacity, then they're going to ask the districts to investigate whether or not they are able to regionalize, consolidate, to somehow or another meet capacity. And the velvet hammer is the kind of a comment that I'm, we're hearing. I'm not sure it's going to be in that same.
They were a little rock group.
Yep. Is that the long term? Is that the correct term?
No, that's good.
Okay. I think that, you know, I think some of, some of the people who are getting really excited are wanting to say it's going to happen like that. I, I get the feeling that they're going to be reasonable and let us, you know, plan and be reasonable over a period of time.
Can I keep going?
Yes, please.
Okay, thanks. Now I have a question about what your, what your assessment is of the speed with which Hatfield and Hadley are moving.
You know, I can only, it would be unfair for me to speak for Mr. Darden, but I get the impression that there are some superintendents or districts that feel that they want to take control over a situation rather than be dumb to.
So there's, there's three things, I think, here. Okay, one is this sort of state issue of consolidation or.
Regionalization.
Regionalization. So that's the one issue. The second issue is the real need for efficiency on the local level as the districts are getting smaller, especially as part of the state, separate and apart from any pressure from the state, whether or not that should be explored. That is something that has been talked about, that we should be looking at that, separate and apart. And then the third thing is if that kind of collaboration, consolidation, regionalization is the proper thing, who are the proper partners? So those, I think those are the kind of three components, or maybe more, but seems to me those are them. But, you know, if somebody asks you to dance, I think we should at least go around the dance floor once or twice with them and see what they're thinking about.
Well, I'm also curious about the effect on the cities. I mean, I, Hatfield and Hadley have different kind of municipal or non-municipal, whatever, you know.
Towns.
So I don't, they're towns, we're a city. I'm not sure what the. I'm not sure what the impact is on, whether it's the same or different on those two entities.
You negotiate a regional, you negotiate a regional agreement that would reflect the decision-making processes.
Yeah, but if there is an impact on the city, on the municipal, on our, there would be an impact on our budget in Northampton.
That's part of the.
All of those things are things that have to be considered, aren't they?
Right, those are the parts of the exploration, but I don't think we can say what the outcome is.
Right. We can, I can answer some of your questions. I think some of the impact will be, negative impact would be clearly on Hatfield, which is why they've been requested to. My concern and my suggestion for you to take into consideration, the mayor explained it very quickly nicely. I think one, my recommendation to the school committee would be, don't necessarily take regionalization off the table as something to research, but you may want to take regionalization with Hatfield off the table only because of their timeframe. Because they're wanting to push this very quickly, and to do so, my experience of where Northampton moves, may force us into making quick decisions.
It's hard to get buy-in from the community when they haven't had a chance to be aware of it. So I think that's.
I think it's important to sit down with Hatfield and say, what are the parameters here?
Well, even if Hatfield and Hadley regionalize, that is something to preclude the fact that we would be added into a, if they could, if that entity could regionalize with Northampton at a later date. So I'm not trying to push that. I'm only asking what's motivating them to move so quickly? What will be, and what would be the impact of a discussion about regionalization in general for us? Which is why I asked the question about funding and a variety, and control, and a bunch of other things about regionalization from the city.
Will you push your hand about to vote?
It feels to me it's the kind of, we haven't had a sort of retreat for some time. And it feels to me that at the beginning of the year, we're really good to have like, sometimes have evenings or half-days, but this is such a huge thing. And we've got a number of other huge things looming, that I would like to suggest.
If we could, I mean, you know, I'm asking questions.
The committee yet.
I'm asking questions that I didn't really expect an answer to tonight, but if we could get an idea of what the questions are so that we could put together people who had the answers and get us all together in one place, that would be extremely helpful.
Ms. Footman, Mr. Flynn, Ms. Milton.
What is it that Hatfield is asking for in this? This is a formal inquiry into Northampton's district into looking at.
They want to know whether or not we would be interested in entering into discussions with them to regionalize. And if so, then we would have to, tonight, what I would suggest, because if they want to come up with a plan for February.
Well, we can't, we have to agree to that plan by February if we want to enter into conversation with them?
I think we're having conversations with incomplete information. I think it would be useful us to figure out who needs to be at a meeting with them to have the conversation.
Yeah, what is it that they're looking for?
They would need to have a conversation with us.
Well, who do they want to have a conversation with?
They're writing to the school committee. They're writing to the school committee. And he's writing on behalf of his school committee, saying they'd like to have a discussion.
And if we said we wanted to, we could delegate.
Couple of members with the superintendent.
Superintendent and Delina, or whatever, to go talk to.
That's right.
So I think, yeah, I mean, we can certainly sit down at a table with them and say, you know, what do you have in mind? What are you thinking? What would it look like? And what's the rest?
I think that's what, well, that would be one of the questions would be. I think it was Mr. Flynn and Ms. Milton, right?
I'm just actually asking for clarification. Are we voting? So it says vote on our agendas.
I think we would want to take, somebody should move, if you wanted to explore this further somewhat, we should move to ask the superintendent to set up a meeting with the Hatfield superintendent and representatives of their school committee, and we should identify representatives of our school committee to go to that meeting.
And there's no inherent risk in going, in just having that initial conversation?
No, no.
So what's the caution, I guess I'm just trying to figure out what the caution would be then about this timeline? Because it's not like.
I think the question is to them, what, you know, tell us what you're thinking about timing, as opposed to judging it one way or another.
Yeah, it seems reasonable.
Well, my, you're now just saying, let's just meet and talk. My caution would be as if you all just said, yeah, let's do it.
Oh, that's reasonable.
I'm not hearing that now, so I feel a little bit more at ease. I just was thinking, my gosh, December, if you all said, let's do it, I'm thinking, holy Toledo, how are we going to get there from here?
Ms. Milton, how long have you worked with that?
I know.
We have actually. We sometimes can't decide to adjourn.
I know.
We'll slow them right down.
Yeah, but you surprised me.
Ms. Milton.
Yeah, I was thinking that we need to keep in mind that we want to consolidate with some area next to us. And if you look at the map, how many areas are already in another district? Hatfield is still there, but if they go to the frontier, for instance, who will we go to? So just keep that in mind.
I would mention, I would note that there are schools that are not contiguous that are regionalized. Cities and towns that are not contiguous. But it's a good point. And I do think there's going to be a big discussion about regionalization, and we need to be on top of that.
Sure.
Maine just went from, Mike might know more about this, Maine just went from 200 to 100 school districts statewide. Other places are looking at this issue of consolidation. You know, we have, we have a very archaic school organization structure, town by town. Most states with a much larger geographic area, one could argue whether it's good or bad, it just is.
Don't we give that one how it's taken?
In the state of Massachusetts, if you're a regional district, you get more reimbursement on your transportation. That's right. We get none, so any is more. And given the budget situation, who knows if that'll continue, but it's still a good, you know. So does somebody want to make a motion?
Sure. Make a motion that we respond to the request from the superintendent of Hatfield Schools to sit down with the Hatfield School Committee to discuss regionalization?
I'll second that.
Okay. Because they called themselves an exploratory committee, so it may not be the school committee. Well, we don't get the word in there. Get through there.
Right. Oh, okay.
Well, so we don't think we're.
Okay, with the exploratory committee of the Hatfield School Committee.
Is it inherent in your motion that you're asking, or did you say it, Ms. Milton, that you're asking the chair to designate a few people, or the vice chair to designate the members to?
That was going to be my next question, was the process was.
Accompany this superintendent?
Yes. With the vice chair appoint.
Okay.
I didn't know it had to be in the motion.
And is it up to three? Do you want to say a number? I want to know.
Do I want to say a number?
Well, do we have?
Let's get the, you know, let's just figure out. You have to be careful, well, you have to be careful about open meeting stuff, so it can't be everybody.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, do we want to?
Two, three?
Do we want that in the motion, though?
Doesn't have to be, I mean, the motion's made in secondary, but we're having discussion here. Anybody going to say anything about that? Okay. Wait, if you're ready to vote on the motion, we can just vote on the motion.
I think the issue is, nobody from the school committee is authorized to commit us in any way unless we give them that authority. And it's very clear to me that we're not giving them any authority except to go and listen to what's being discussed.
Bring it back to the whole committee.
So, I mean, I'm not sure that, you know, it's however many people want to go.
Well, I think if more than a quorum goes according to the DA, then you have an open meeting law, so.
Oh, yeah.
But I mean, if we send one person or three people, I don't think.
I just think it's helpful to have a couple of people, have a couple of different points of view.
They have enough trouble getting a quorum on executive session, but.
I'm ready to vote. Does anybody else have anything?
Yes.
How about the two at the end of the table?
We have really cut the budget. We'll start in January. Just need a few more buses, we'll have more in half.
All in favor?
Aye.
Paused, okay. Moving right along.
So now can we talk about the process of if anybody wants to, a couple of members?
Ms. Wright has a question.
Ms. Wright.
Not that I'm looking for another meeting to go to, but I do think it would be, depending on how you approach this meeting, it might be useful for the business manager.
I think the superintendent could bring whoever she wants on the staff side.
Okay.
Joy Winnie.
She loves me. I'm just thinking that there's so many financial ramifications that I think it's.
Yep, I think you're right.
So are there members of the school committee who are interested in going?
I actually am.
I am, too. I know.
Wait a minute. Delina, Mike? Anyone else raise your hand?
Okay.
And you mocked me when I said great.
How many people? I see, that's a bit of interest.
If three people is.
So moved, so.
I second that emotion.
Raise a quorum?
What are you talking about?
Raise a quorum.
We're not even on the same committee, so we're not a subcommittee quorum either.
Okay.
Okay, so you have those names, is one of your contacts?
No, I didn't.
Kathy, Delina, and Mike.
Kathy, Delina, and Mike, okay.
So, good luck to you, you'll find a good time when they all can go.
With Hat.
You can pick up your border credentials at my office.
But thank you for being, I mean, and then I would, assuming you meet before the next school meeting.
I would hope so.
And then their timeline looks like they want to, so.
Yeah.
Something you do, then let's get back on the agenda for next time for you.
Absolutely.
As to the content of your discussion.
Absolutely, okay, yep. All right.
Okay, next is the superintendent's report.
You've got it. Great, you have in your packet the student enrollment, and as promised, you, sorry?
It's on your table. Don't worry about it. I'll go ahead.
All right. You have, as promised, class sizes for the high school and JFK as well. So you have student enrollments for elementary through grade 12. And they look, they look pretty good. Very good. We still have that lead's class at the elementary as being high. And then we do have a couple of large classes at the high school. Stats and probability, where it's 34, World War II, 33. And our average class sizes at JFK are good. And I'm just reminding you that there has been a commitment to keeping class sizes very good at JFK because of the statistics that we have had here at JFK, which has proven a good strategy because we are moving our students or the school out of crooked activity. I think what I will do is not, I mean, the numbers have not really significantly changed, so I'm not going to bring another student enrollment report until March, until we start, you know, really looking at budget and anticipated projections.
Unless you see a large sway, if there's a big.
Personnel report, we have a couple of retirements. I have to say that Mary Lorenz, special education teacher at Ryan Road, is retiring or at the end of this month. And as her former director of special education, I have to say she is going to be sorely missed. She's a phenomenal teacher, caring teacher. But she certainly has enjoyed her free time, whenever she's been on school vacation. I've loved hearing what she's done on vacation, so I'm sure she will be enjoying her retirement as well. Whoever is filling her shoes, has got big shoes to fill. She will be sorely missed. And I unfortunately did get the ears. I wish I had the ears done. I don't have the ears. Failed to get that before. I can't hear that. And James Lamb as well, custodian at Northampton High School, is retiring. Those are the only two, and I wish them both the best of luck. I have two field trips, they're both JFK field trips. One is eighth grade chorus with Mr. Hinks. They're going to New York on April 29th to see Mama Mia. They're assuring me that it is an educational trip because they're performing Mama Mia. So they have to see Mama Mia in order to know how to perform Mama Mia. Okay? So, and then the eighth grade history, I forgot the Y there, eighth grade history class is going to Washington DC. So I'd like approval on those two field trips, please.
Move, move.
Second.
I have a question, the chorus one, they've done before.
Yep. Not Mama Mia.
Right. I don't have any questions about that. I have a question about the other one. The 21st to the 25th, is that, that's during school or after school?
It is after school theoretically, but.
What if there's no days?
That's why I'm looking for approval, because if it were after school, I wouldn't need your school, I wouldn't need school committee approval, because it's after school and the kids are going, and they only need parent approval, but.
If it's a school sponsor, don't we?
I still bring it forward for you to acknowledge, but because the only reason why we need school committee approval is it's going out of state, and so that the school committee is aware during school.
It's a school.
Yeah, the school's not.
I think it's a sponsored event, we've got liability.
Yeah, you're right.
Kathy has a question, so all of the, but I have that, so just.
In the literature, in full disclosure, my daughter is going on this trip, and in the literature, it says it's not a school-sponsored event? Yeah.
What does that mean? They didn't tell me that it wasn't.
I know, and I have.
Okay, then you know what? Please do not approve this one, and let me get more information, since I have plenty of time to get approval.
A motion to table this would be in order till the next meeting?
Yep.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
I. Can I ask?
Yeah, please ask.
So other questions that you might find out about? Seven hundred and fifty dollars seems like a lot. Awful lot of money. Who is organizing this? I mean, beside the teacher, who's sponsoring? If it's not a school-sponsored trip, who is sponsoring?
But I haven't, that's what the literature said. I haven't got that.
You know what?
I think the point is, we table it because we don't have the answers, so.
I was just looking for more answers about the funding.
If you have questions that you know you want us to believe to find answers to, maybe people could just email them to us and get them the answers. Because I did ask for tabling motion, and theoretically, you're not supposed to talk about it after you table.
Thank you.
That's just a little wrong. I should have waited.
Thank you. I'm glad you took it with you then.
Okay.
And your packet.
We haven't, we voted on, we didn't vote on the other one.
The Mama Mia one.
The Mama Mia one.
So we have a motion to approve Mama Mia, in all her splendor?
So.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. If only they would see Chris Brown.
Okay. Class size article?
Class size article, you all received a copy of the class size article via email. I thought it was pretty interesting. Obviously, the mayor did too, because she also asked for it to be sent to you. I, you know, I think that we're all going to be looking at class sizes. We've had discussions, I asked Susan to pull together preliminary budget projections. I asked Susan to pull together preliminary budget projections for us, our administrative team, to start having conversations around anticipated budget, our anticipated budget for next year, and we did start having conversations around class size. I think we're all going to be, you know, not only North Hampton, but other districts as well statewide, and as you can see with this article, other states as well. We're not going to be alone in this conversation. And I know as a school committee, you have valued, you know, the, you have put a huge value on class size. But I think it's something that we really need to revisit. And this article talks about how many districts are in that same position revisiting the idea of class size. On that topic about budget, I also included in your packet a press release from Speaker Demasi that was sent to our organization, Mass Association School Superintendents, that talks about more than likely a 10% cut to local aid. I can tell you that at the Mass Association School Committee conference that I went to, they did use that percentage, 10%, to local aid. They talked about a definite cut to chapter 70. And I know that we have on the agenda, the mayor speaking to what that might look like to the city budget as well. So we are definitely looking at significant cuts across the board, across the state. So we were already anticipating budget cuts due to our own budget for fiscal '09. And with these likely cuts for fiscal '10, we, at the state level, we're going to be having some really difficult conversations. And I would, and our hope is, and their goal is to try to get some of these numbers or percentages out to us as soon as possible actively. This way I mean, so from January or tail end of January. And that's about it.
Any questions for the superintendent? Okay, shall we move into Ms. Wright's portion of the meeting?
Passing around the business manager report. Tonight, we only have two contracts to approve and the warrants to sign. The first contract is with Vulcan Locksmiths. It's for installation of an automatic door opener at the high school. The cost is $8,219. And the source of funding will be the, if you remember, we have the Holly Fund. This was a fund that was from several years ago. And last October, we brought it to the school committee. And it was actually in the purview of the treasurer and it was in the scholarship funds and it wasn't a scholarship. So it came over to us as the gift fund. It was for improvements to the Holly School, which we no longer own. And in the October 2007 meeting, you took a vote to have that be used for any improvements to any of our school buildings. So there's about $10,000 there. And we're proposing that the $8,200 for this improvement for the automatic door openers at the high school come from that fund because that was an unanticipated expense. And then I'll do the other contract. The other one is just Williston Children's Center. It's $4,000 and it's out of the CPC grant to subsidize childcare for working families.
A motion to approve the contract? Does anyone have any discussion? Second? Any questions, comments? Yep.
Why do we need, is this, are the automatic openers for the torches or?
Yes, this is a new location that we want to add them. We already have them, but the one, we want to add it in a new location.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? All in favor?
Yes. Okay, the next, we're going to cover two fiscal years with my report tonight. I'm going to give you the lowdown on fiscal '09, our current fiscal year, and then we're going to go back in time, do FY '08, and I'm going to go through very briefly the end of the year report. So I think it's a good summary for us as we start into fiscal 2010 that we can kind of look at a report that brings together all of the pieces of the, of the school budget. But for now, the '09 budget, you can see in the packet, we have the budget from UNIS, the appropriation budget. And if you turn to the second page of that, you can see that we have $23,187,479 in our appropriation, which is the first column on that second page. We have, just kind of ignored the second column. That column is a combination of carryforwards from the previous year and transfers that we've been doing. And then the revised budget adds that column. So to date, we've spent $8.4 million of our $23 million appropriation budget. We're about 36% expended. That's right where we should be. And right now, I'm not seeing anything alarming except for the added district account, which we'll talk about a little bit later. But other than that, everything's humming along the way we would anticipate. We have put a freeze, a, a, a kind of moderate freeze on supplies at the moment, trying to ask everybody to only get the supplies that they absolutely need to get through the fiscal year because we're trying to conserve, given that we might be looking at some other issues come January, so statewide. So we're just taking a cautious view at this point. We've not frozen anything else but supplies at this point. If you flip to the two pages after that, you'll see the summary that you see every meeting about school choice. So we give you the $22 million, $23 million appropriation, then school choice, as you know, is another $1.5 million of the budget. You can see to date, as of today, we have spent $527,000 of our school choice budget. We had planned, we planned to spend $1.4 million. We have $921,000 left. Of that, of the money that's in school choice, we started the year with $1.6 million and we committed $1.4 million. So you can see we have $155,000 unallocated reserve right now in school choice. So everything is coming along the way. I will make one note, under the early retirement installment payment, we just made that on this warrant. This is year 14 of a 15-year commitment. This was for an early retirement incentive that was enacted many, many years ago. So fiscal 2010 will be the last year we have that payment. So that's a, we'll free up about $44,000 in the appropriation or this, or in our budget. The next page talks about unemployment, just gives you a summary of our unemployment up until October. We've spent $35,000. We're almost identical to where we were at this time in fiscal '08. The next page is a summary of our special and revolving funds. And it shows you what we've brought in for revenue in all of these funds thus far, where, what our expenses have been thus far, and what our current balance is. Right now, the food service account is in the red. I'm not concerned though, it's just a matter of reimbursements from the state coming in at timing issues. So I'm not concerned about that. We're not that off in our, you know, labor and expenses and revenues there. It's just a timing issue. You can see I've added two other, three other new things to this sheet that you hadn't been seeing for, in previous years. We have the after-school revolving account is on there, and that will continue to be on there because even though the program is no longer funded by the district, there are three programs operating. JFK, Ryan Road, and Leeds are operating programs running the funds through one of our revolving funds. And then the last two, we have the Smith College donation of $100,000. And then we also, in October, received the foundation reserve, which is otherwise known as the pothole money, and received $19,000 there. So this just summarizes for you where we are with our special and revolving funds. What I summarized below there, you can see the school choice. We have, where it says A, we have $155,000 in unallocated reserves in school choice. Circuit breaker. Right now, we have $192,000 of unallocated reserves in circuit breaker. But I did tell you at the last school committee meeting that of those two reserves, the school choice reserves and the circuit breaker reserves, those equal about $350,000. And the special ed director, Dr. Jergensen, and I have been through the 9,000 account. We have had some, lots of unanticipated move-ins and other issues. So we anticipate the over-budget and the added district account by possibly $280,000. I think that's a worst-case scenario at this point. So we are temporarily kind of putting a hold on those reserves. So we really, right now, have about $68,000 for unexpected, additional unexpected issues in the district. So we're going to continue to watch that. We continue to keep you up to date on that. I think we'll, there's nothing we can do at this point. We are doing the best we can. So I just want to make the committee aware that our reserves are probably at the lowest they've been in in probably 10 years. Sad situation. The next page shows you the revolving fund. I put this in here periodically. I just do want to keep you abreast of what's going on again, even though we're not funding it, they are running it, and I want you to be assured that we are watching this to make sure that this does not go into the red. This has to be, those three programs have to be self-sustaining. And as you can see, they are. Right now, they're $7,600 to the good, and we are watching this closely as well because we do not have any funds to help supplement any, any program. I'm going to go through the other things on my end of the year report and then go to the end of the, I mean, the other things in my business manager report, and then go to the '08 end of the year report. In here is the capital improvements recommendations. They're actually the mayor's recommendations, and they've been to the first reading with city council, and we'll go to the second reading with city council. And I don't know, do you, Mayor, do you want to go over what you recommended for the school department or do you want?
You can go ahead. I mean, there are questions I can ask.
Okay, so the items that were recommended for the school department, and again, capital planning had very little money to work with this year. But we do, we did get funding for a dump truck for $45,000, a new delivery truck for $35,000 to replace a 1986 vehicle. We did get funding for the Bridge Street School detention basin and sewer tie-in. I think we've talked about this before, but Bridge Street School has an issue with flooding because of the detention basins, which are underground there. And every time we get a downpour, we have issues of flooding in the cafeteria and then up that hallway. This will help tie in to the city system rather than have the water go into these detention basins, which are supposed to then have the water percolate down into the groundwater. So this will, this will be a major improvement for Bridge Street School. We also got $20,000 for exterior trim repair and replacement at Bridge Street, and $60,000 for Leeds rubber roof replacement. A section of this leaks, and we'll be doing some repairs there. And then, of course, the third year of funding for the district-wide technology, a five-year technology improvement program. So I think, given the capital planning committee had very little money to work with, I think we got a lot of our priority projects funded, so that was good news.
The only thing I'd say about the capital, and I want to thank Kathy for giving again for the service and to mention that. I think the committee recognized a short amount of money, and we prioritized, and I prioritized, life safety, building safety, and more kinds of issues so that we're not.
Safety is always the number one.
Right, right. So vehicles, roofs, drainage, those kinds of things that will affect the, the safety of employees or the integrity of our buildings were our first priority this year. And, and funding the technology plan, which we had made last year.
Okay, I want to give you a quick update on the pool. You probably read the article in the paper about the pool drains and the federal regulation. We anticipate that the pool covers for the drains will be here by next Friday. And David Palmerant and Mike Deyman are working very hard to get those installed in a way that we do not have to drain the pool because the cost of draining the pool would be another expense that we really didn't budget for. So they are looking into getting that done. So we are hoping that we, no matter what happens, we will be in compliance. We did talk about it today at department head meeting because it's an issue that involves the Board of Health, the rec department, the school department, and everybody. And it is bogged down in lots of unanswered questions from the federal government. There are pools that have drains that have no solutions. So there is no actual cover or equipment that can be bought to, to make the pool in compliance. There are pools that can't even get the equipment, that pool manufacturers are not up to speed enough that they can actually get enough of the equipment and out there. So we're in the same boat with lots of, lots of other people, but our pool is relatively new. We have got covers on order and we've been assured that they're going to be here next Friday. So I think we're in a, we're in probably a better position than many other facilities or pools right now, but we'll keep you posted. We're all on top of it, and we're working as much as we can to get it done.
Given our very, very limited surplus or for emergencies, what do we think this is going to cause?
Right now, the pool covers will be about $2,000.
Oh, okay.
And then maybe a couple of hundred dollars in labor. So that's.
So it's not a huge expense?
It's not, actually, let's see, I'm looking at the notes. David and Mike said $2,000 total for the covers and about $1,000 maybe for a scuba diver. But that's what we're looking for. We're trying to find a scuba diver that can, we don't want to drain the pool because that's time, money, utilities.
Is it something that we, the school, are absorbing the whole thing?
Yes, we absorb all the pool maintenance costs, so.
This is a national problem. We're doing pretty well. We've got to get this done.
$3,000, we can get it fixed.
A short, a short money, given what some places we're going to do.
Or close it completely.
It's a huge.
So that's the update on the pool. And then one last thing I'd like to acknowledge, and perhaps you need to vote to accept, I'm not sure. Our transportation director, Joy Winnie, when she was at the national conference, won a raffle and won a $200 star seat, which we can use in our vans to transport special ed students, our buses, excuse me. So it's a gift to the school committee from, you know, Joy won it, but it's really for us, so.
A motion to accept a gift would be in order?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Besides the fact that they don't let them win like tickets to a restaurant?
She was excited.
And she was excited, she told me about it. She was so happy.
She was very excited. Okay, and the last.
All in favor? All in favor?
We're lucky she didn't give it to you, Kathy.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so the last thing I'm passing around is the end of the year report. And this is a, I'll go through this very quickly because I can see that we could actually get out of here before 10:00. And. Before it gets too icy. So I'm just. So, but I think it's important to go through this report because it shows you where all of the things that come together. We don't always look at the budget as comprehensively as the end of the year report does. So beginning with page one, page one and page two, talk about the revenues that come into the school department. They don't consider the city appropriation a revenue. So you don't see the $22 million for, from the city here. But what you do see is, if you look at the first column, I mean, the first page, you see $18,279, that's money we get from E-Rate. You look at the $275,576, that's the money we get from Medicaid. You can see school aid is there. We got, in chapter 70, in fiscal '08, we got $7 million. The next line, which is section B, revenue from state aid, shows the Mass School Building Authority. That's our aid, our construction aid for school building projects. Authority, that's our aid, our construction aid for school building projects. Then there's the charter school reimbursement, which is a small amount of money compared to what actually goes out for charter school tuitions, and that's $238,000. And then you can see the Circuit Breaker money, which is five, which was 575,699. So each of these sections, the revenue from local sources above, which was A, totals 293, and revenue from state aid, which is B, totals 11 million. If you go to the next page, you'll see section C, D, and E, which is revenue from federal grants, state grants, and then our revolving and special funds. So you can see our federal grants totaled 1.4 million and our state grants were about 600,000. And then all our revenue from our revolving and special funds was, actually, they don't total that, but they total all of them there. You can see was 2.3 million when you add all of these together. So again, this is not counting the appropriation, which is our largest source as a revenue. This is just looking at everything else but that. Okay, the next page is schedule one. And this section, schedule one, deals only with the appropriation. So all of the detail here and for the next 20 pages is just the appropriation. And we only look at three columns here. You look at regular day, special ed, or undistributed. We do not have anything in the other columns. So these next 20 pages just detail out by program area where we spent the money. So if you turn to, I want to say page 15 of 20, the last line and the last column is And that was the appropriation from the city. So all of the preceding pages just detail out by program area, by category, either regular education, special ed, or undistributed.
Can you refresh my memory of what that undistributed?
Undistributed is administrative costs. Or things that are not specifically regular ed or special.
And you don't allocate, like, on a percentage for those?
No, no, these are actuals.
No, what I'm saying is the undistributed, they want you to undistribute them.
Right.
They don't want you to say that X percentage of the business office goes to special education. They don't want you to...
No, this is the, this is the way they want it broken out. So you can see at the end of page 15, the appropriation was 22,732,825. Okay, if you turn to the next page, the next two pages are the contributions the city makes towards the school department budget that don't get reflected in the school budget.
Sixteen and seventeen.
So, page sixteen and seventeen. So if you turn to those two pages, this is where we document the expenses on the city side that go towards the school budget. Now, the first one, where it says...
That don't come out of the school budget.
That don't come out of the school budget.
Addition to the 23 is this 11.
Right. So you see business and finance, you see the 102,025. This is our portion of the city financial team. Our portion of the tax collector, the treasurer, the assessors, everybody involved in running the financial piece of the city.
So the payroll?
The payroll, et cetera.
The bill paying.
On the city side?
Yeah, this is, we're paying, so the city pays for all of that. Some percentage of their time goes to school business. So we're reflecting...
Someone go to PPW, police, fire, that's you.
That's right. And we, we negotiate a percentage agreement to sign off on every year.
Every school district in the state has to put some value on the cert, on the pieces of the city budget or the town budget that go towards schools but that aren't necessarily reflected in the school department budget. So you can see for human resources, that's our share of the HR department. If you go down to district-wide management technology, that's line 1920, 117,000, that's our share of MIS. And you just, you can go down through this, you can see on line 2,000, employer retirement contributions, there's 802,000, that's our contribution for school employees to the retirement system.
That, that doesn't reflect on the school budget. It's like the health insurance.
Right. And the next line is the health insurance, which is 4 million.
What is extraordinary maintenance?
Extraordinary maintenance is, sometimes can be capital projects that might be funded by the city out of the capital budget, that are cash capital, not bonded capital. If you go down to the next page, you can see the two large numbers, 3,144 and 1.2 million, those are the city's payments on the debt on our school construction project. So one payment reflects the actual principal and the other one is the interest. So if you look at the bottom line, the last column, in fiscal '08, what we quantified is that the city budget picks up another 11,753 of expenses related to the school department. So when you add that to the appropriation, we're at 34,486. That actually comes out of the city budget to run the Northampton Public Schools.
34.
34,486,214, which is those two numbers, the appropriation of this together.
So the total city budget is 62.
About 78, no, it's about 70. So if you did the same exercise in Smithville and you put this, what is it, 30, did you say?
34.
34 million and you put this Smithville number together, you're well above 50, you know, 50%.
For education.
For education. You're 50, I think 50 something.
Okay, the next page pulls in the last and third section of our budget. We're on page where it says page 19 of 20. These two pages and the next two pages pull in all of the grants, all of the federal grants, the state grants, the Circuit Breaker, school choice, private grants, donations, athletic fees, bus fees, building use fees, school lunches, everything else. And if you look at the next two, if you look at the page, turn, you see the page that says page 19 of 20. Flip that page and we'll get to the bottom of this section. And again, look at the last column, which is column 11, look at the last line, you're going to see there was another 5,311,202 of funds that went into the school budget. So when you add that to the appropriation, which was 22.7, and the 11.7 that the city puts in, that's the 34 plus another 5, total cost in fiscal '08 was $39 million to run the Northampton Public Schools.
39 million.
And I just want to emphasize that because we spend all, we spend the bulk of our time talking about school choice and the appropriation. And we, and, and there's this huge other piece out there. You know, we concentrate on about 25, 26 million of the budget, but there's this whole other piece. So the total cost last year of running the Northampton Public Schools was 39,7 million. Now that's the end of schedule one. Schedule two does, is the next page, and that doesn't even relate to us because we're not a regional school district yet. Schedule three, we don't need to look at this at all, everything in schedule three is already included in schedule one. Schedule three is just taking the instructional portion of the budget. It takes out all the administration, all the maintenance, it takes all the other peripheral things and just compiles more detailed information on the instruction, the actual time, our actual core mission, which is educating kids. So schedule three is just another level of detail that's already been accounted for in schedule one. Okay? So you can flip through this where you can see at the bottom, it says schedule K, schedule three, page eight. Go to schedule three, page 10 of 10, and then flip to the next page. One of these years, I will remember to number these pages for you. Schedule, I just want to point out, schedule four is primarily focused on special ed. And what it does is take the detail that was on the previous pages and just look at special ed and try to pull that apart. And it does it in two sections. At first, it looks at the in-district special ed costs that we incur, and then it looks at the out-of-district special ed costs. So you can see on line, and when I refer to lines, I'm talking about the number that's in the box to the right, I mean, excuse me, to the left. And it's not that first line, I don't know what those are, but the ones that are in the boxes. If you look at line 3860, which says total instructional services, and go across to column nine, which is the last one, in district, we spent 4.5 million on special education in district. The next section is the out-of-district. So if you go down and you look at line 3920, you can see out-of-district, we went, spent 1.9 million. So the total that we spent on special ed was 6.5 million in fiscal '08.
Of the 39 million, 6.5 was...
Right.
Now, this instructional expenditures, the six, it was like 19 million? Is that, where did I just see that? Was that the total?
The schedule three?
Yeah, was that the total of all instructional, the 19 million, or is that just the total of that section?
No, that's total of all sections, I believe. Yeah, that should be everything.
Direct instructional?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, then the next page...
Except it's not the instruction that would be funded by a grant.
Well, I think schedule three, and schedule three, that 19 million includes grants.
Includes grants.
Yeah. And revolving funds, et cetera.
It doesn't separate that.
I was just trying, I mean, my, I was just, my brain made an assumption about what Kathy was doing, but I was trying to figure out what percentage of our total budget is spent on instructional services, which is where I was going. And that didn't seem right, but I guess because this total budget includes all of the schedule 19 stuff, including debt service on our building stuff, it's, it makes that number look not quite what we expect.
But it actually, yeah, when you take those other things out, what we have, what we actually discretionary have to spend, that's...
But it includes our fixed costs. These are including our...
So if you turn to the page after schedule four, the next page is schedule seven, it doesn't say that. This is a very useless schedule.
The tuition reimbursement.
This is about transportation. It says pupil transportation reimbursement. And I'm going to explain why this is useless to Northampton. Because we fund most of our transportation out of school choice, this chart and all these calculations are only related to the money in your budget in your appropriation budget. So they're asking you to do all of these calculations and it only relates to the money in your appropriation budget that you spend on transportation. So I've had several conversations with DOE saying, this isn't giving you the information about Northampton that you want. Because if you turn to the next page of that schedule, you'll see that they have this one little line, it's line 4320, that says payments from revolving and special funds. And then we have 722,000.
The point is that this was when they used to reimburse.
Right.
Well, yeah, I see.
So hopefully, at some point, this will...
It's like they just did MASS, just did a survey where they were taking information from the DOE website.
It's totally skewed for Northampton because so much of our transportation, we take, we outpaid out of school choice.
Are we unique in using that for transportation? Or are there other districts that are using their school of choice?
A year or two ago, we made the switch where we put our out-of-district special ed transportation into the appropriation because there was a chance that that might become reimbursable. And they said, they told us, if we took it out of school choice, they couldn't reimburse us because it was like reimbursing us twice. So we moved that and we now pay for special ed out-of-district transportation in the appropriation budget and everything else. Regular ed and our in-district spend is paid for out of school choice.
I think the chances of us being reimbursed for special transportation is greater than regular ed, as long as we don't become recharged.
So the total, to the end of not having our number, if the state actually is looking at these, whether it's for reimbursement or something else, would it make sense for us to put it, all transportation back into the appropriation budget and use, and take something else out and put in school choice?
The problem with switching things around is if I was to take 700,000 from school choice and say, okay, now we're going to pay for 700,000 in the appropriation, I'd have to take another 700,000 of stock in the appropriation and put it into school choice, which would mean creating hundreds of new account numbers.
She says exactly like it's...
And then, what you, but what you lose is the ability, is, is tracking ability. Because right now, it's already starting, the more school choice we use, these last two years, we've used big hunks of reserves and we've put electricity and things like that. It makes it hard because then when you go back to the budget, you want to look at the history of utility use. You have to, you have to remember, oh, yeah, the high school electrical came out of school choice that year and this year, something else. So the more consistency we can have in doing that and the less account numbers makes for fewer mistakes.
Which was the original argument for using the school choice funds to pay for non-recurring expenses. Back when we had that option. You know, we, we weren't, we were wise to understand that that's the way it should have been. We've just become so heavily dependent on that income, we can't fund our budget without it, that, but I was just trying to think if there is something and, you know, something that's, not non-recurring, but less recurring or less predictable, less, so in other words, if you, if you put textbooks or, you know, something that varies from year to year, is there something that you can take out so that we don't run the risk if the state starts to use, to pull numbers from these reports, something that won't put us at risk for losing potential funders?
I think if that, if that were talked about, we could easily make that switch. And we did make the switch and we are in a position if they do have that, but it does...
But you're not, you're not voting for doing it. If you have to create a bunch of...
Susan and I, Susan and I have had this conversation every year whenever we do the budget. At this point, it's easier.
We've also had this conversation in budget and property because I think that the budget that Susan inherited had so much in school choice. It had salaries, it had teachers. So she's worked really hard to clean it up and get it all where it can be tracked. And so transportation was a big, easy, one-time payment. And when we were talking about this last year, what could we replace it with? And it's not easy to find something that, that large that we could replace it in the, you know, plug it in there with.
It's, in, in the 2,000 account, we want to keep things in the 2,000 account in the appropriation as much as possible too, because the level of detail that, that we have to report that at is a, is a different level than something that's in the transportation or maintenance or something. So, so with transportation, it, what I want to point out is that there's that 722 that comes from our revolving and special funds. And then there was 328 that came from other places. So you can see, when you add those two numbers together, we spent about 1,050,000. And that doesn't include another 100,000 of our own staff because we have transportation supervisor and three buses and three drivers. So when you add it all together, transportation is 1.1 million of the budget. I'm almost done here. Schedule 19 is the next page. And this schedule 19 looks at the current year. And it takes the appropriation by the school committee and pulls some other things out that they want to look at. And it doesn't really, it doesn't, if you notice, nothing right here relates to the 2,000 account. This just is talking about administration. And then the 3,000 account, which is more like pupil services, special ed, food serve, I mean, pupil transportation, food service, et cetera. But down the bottom, they have the number again, the total appropriation by the school committee was in, in the current fiscal year is 23,187. So this schedule 19 is looking at this fiscal year, not last fiscal year. If you turn the page, you'll see schedule 19 is looking ahead at what city contributions will be to the school department. And you can see at the bottom there on line 7690, we estimate 11.7 million contribution from the city in addition to the appropriation budget. And then the next section just talks about what we've estimated in the current fiscal year for some other revenue sources. So these are things that the DOE is looking at to see how our new, our current fiscal year budget is relating to our previous year fiscal budget. If you turn the next, to the next page, you'll see, the second page says expenditure summary '08, all fund types. And this is where it starts to pull together some of the information. And we're back to fiscal '08, this report kind of jumps around. But if you look to the bottom again, you see that same 19 million. which is all of these, all of these accounts that they decide that they want to look at here. Total instruction in the 2000 account, 19 million dollars. So this is, it's kind of a mishmash. They use this report to create other reports that do comparisons with other communities. But if you turn to the next page, you'll see the magic number, which we've all been looking at, where it says expenditure summary, page 3 of 3. You look at the very last line. This is where it all comes together, 39,797,416. So that's the total picture. And then you can look at this by the type of funding source, which are the columns and the types of program managers. And then the last two pages, which I want to call your attention to, look at next year's spending. And if you look to the next page, the top page is FY '08, and the bottom page is FY '09. And the important numbers to look at here are on line 28. The net school spending that we had in '08 was 29 million.
Wait, wait, what line?
Uh, line 28. And then you look at line 29, which was our required net school spending. And that was 24.9. So the difference between these two numbers is how much we are over foundation. And we're over foundation in fiscal '08 by 4 million dollars.
And that's 29 million.
Right, that's 29 million was our net school spending, and our required net school spending was 24.9. So we were over net school spending by 4 million in '08. If you look at the same chart for '09, which again is built on estimates, not actuals, and you look at line 58, you can see our net school spending requirement has grown. It is 29,378. So it's grown from the previous year.
Oh, that's good.
No, our net schools vending has gone up slightly. But our next, the next line is the required net school spending. You can see has jumped significantly. It went from 24.9 million in '08 to 26 million in '09. Because of that jump in required net school spending, the amount that we're over foundation has dropped by almost 800,000 dollars.
Do you have percentages by any chance in your report of what percentage we're over net school spending last year to this year? Yeah, just if...
No, I didn't do that app.
Okay, yeah.
So in fiscal '09, based on estimates, not actuals, we're 3.2 million over foundation. So you can see that foundation is growing. And as you know, our contribution, our percentage increase in the appropriation from the city was about 2.6 in '08, and it was 2% in '09. So without big growth there in the foundation growing, our net, the amount that we're over foundation is starting to shrink somewhat.
Do you know why our foundation requirement jumps so much?
I wondered about that. And I only just noticed it today, and I thought you should probably check one.
I'd like to look at that.
Because I thought that was a huge jump in one year.
Right, I mean, we're, we're going to see our city spending declining a little bit as the, as the bonds get paid off for the schools. Because you remember that even the overrides counted towards net school spending. So we'll be seeing that drop, but, but, you know, health insurance has been filling up all that gap. So I'd be curious why it jumps.
Yeah, because this is the first year we've actually seen a decline in our, in how much our year over foundation. We've been growing and growing and growing that gap between required and actual.
I'd be curious what that number is.
So I will take a look at that. Okay, and then the last couple of pages, we're not going to look at, but I just want to say where it says reports, and then you can see page 4 of 7. These are comparisons where they take the end of the year report from previous years, '06, '07, '08, for instance. They only look at the appropriation here. So part of the problem is what we were just talking about, is whenever we start shifting something from one funding source to a different pot of money, it starts... So some of the anomalies that you see where there may be a giant drop, it may be because we moved it to a different category. So that's why moving things around gets a little messy because then what I have to do when this report is audited, I have to sit down with the auditor and I have to explain why certain things have changed. So that is where you can see it. If you look at the bottom of that page, which says reports, page 4 of 7, that's where you can see some of the changes in our grants, et cetera, where it says, line 131, you can see that federal grants in '07 were 1.6 million, and in '08, they were 1.4 million.
They were 1.9 in '07.
So you can look and see where federal grants have gone up and down. You can see...
Down by 10%.
Yeah. And you can look at circuit breaker, and you can see where there's increases. One thing, on line 137, where it says school choice, it looks like between '07 and '08, we had a huge increase in school choice. That's not correct, again. In fiscal '08, we did not get 1.4 million in school choice. We used 1.4 million in school choice because we used 400,000 dollars of reserves.
Oh, was it, yeah.
We only got 1,500,000 dollars. The rest was all reserves. So you can look at this information, but you really have to question it and really pull it apart to actually make sense of it. And that's why when you're comparing, when we're comparing ourselves to another school district, it's very hard to do an apples to apples because I may know why that jumped 400,000 dollars in Northampton, but I have no re, you know, I'm not going to know the same thing when I look at another end of the year report from another community. So these reports are useful, but they have some limitations.
Susan, is there somewhere in this report that shows what the per pupil expenditure is? Or is that a different report?
They actually didn't include, they've taken that out of this report because it's been in this report in the past. There always was another report at the end, which did all those calculations. Those are all online. So I think that they've moved a lot of that. They also eliminated a couple of schedules. They eliminated one where we did a lot of information about staff and another schedule, two schedules were eliminated this year all because they're collecting that information through EPMs now, which is like the staff database that we had to create and participate in, just like our student information base. There's now some, what's called EPMs, which is the staff database. And so now they're collecting that information in a different way. So they've changed this up.
So instead of self-reporting, they're getting it from your database?
Right, right. So that per pupil cost, they're still calculating, and that's online. But they, you're right, that's missing from this, and they didn't do it this year. And that is the hit. Thank you. And this is being audited next week by our auditors, outside auditors, which gets done every year. So if there's any changes, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, if somebody could read the budget a few years ago, you've made this so clear, and so well done, I think.
It's a really cool spreadsheet.
Too bad you're too young to take advantage of those classes.
Actually, I took one of the classes they offered because I am an older worker, and I took the PowerPoint. And, you know, my hope would been, and hopefully, maybe Elizabeth and I would get really savvy and do some stuff with PowerPoint for fiscal '10, but...
I was trying to give you a plug there, Susan.
Yeah.
Just trying to tell you that you were young.
I know.
You missed that one.
No, no, I called my.
No, no, I called my.
You know, it could try to do PowerPoint, the projector's all great.
That's right, that's why I'm moving. It's an inevitable skip.
I'm going to, I'm, there is a slim chance we could get out of here at a reasonable time, so I'm going to try to move on with this report. I just want to give you an update of where we are in terms of the thinking about the budget. So there's a set of papers for each of you. The cover sheet is Chris's, you've seen this before, I think, in other years. This is Chris's five-year projection.
Just take the packet.
Yeah, just take a packet, pass it on. Top page is Chris's five-year projection. That we take, and we start with the previous year. We try to move it forward, making some assumptions in terms of growth in cost versus growth in revenue. And it always looks horrifying. So just, but this year is particularly horrible. Okay, so we're starting, so if you go to, just keep that in mind, and then take the first chart behind it. This is if we get no new state aid, what would our total growth in revenue be? Let me just walk through the revenue side here. We get 890,000 dollars in our allowed proposition, two and a half increase on the total of the year before. We're ballparking 600,000 dollars of new growth, which we think is ambitious and may need to drop. Our overrides that are on the belt are dropping this year by 122,000. These are the capital overrides, Fire Station High School and JFK.
Have they done?
They're, they're on a declining schedule. So every year, they go down a little bit. It's not like your mortgage, like your mortgage theoretically is on, you pay the same amount every month. With municipal bonds, you start here, you go here, and then they start going down to a, down the hill. By the end, you're paying a pretty small amount. We're on the declining end of that. That says EES, but it is fees. So that's fees, charges, and fines. We project, you know, two and a half percent or so increase in them. Excise, we think that there will be no growth in the car excise tax this year, and there might actually be a decline. I know the Mayor of East Hampton's been doing a similar kind of analysis. We're waiting to see the February bills, and we may need to revise this. We want to see what the February bills come in at. State aid in this scenario is flat, but federal revenue going up a little bit. That's the Medicaid reimbursements to the schools, and that may be optimistic as well. And the second is the Medicare Part D, which, so this is not all yours. This is about a 50/50 split. Medicare Part D that we pay for retirees, and again, may be ambitious. Interfund transfers, that's the sewer water and solid waste transfers that would come into cover the business costs, similar to the... You know, when you look at the Schedule 19 and you see the business costs that the city is covering for the schools, we do a similar negotiation with the enterprise funds, and they actually pay us out of their receipts. The next are the two...
But this isn't a negative, was it?
Those are the two stabilization funds. The cities use 67, 657 last year of one-time money, and the schools use 640 of one-time money. So that's not revenue this year, right? That's gone. So the net revenue is down on the bottom of the page. The total new growth, net revenue, is 279,000 dollars, 300, 279,344. That's, you notice that there's a date on here? Every time I do one of these, this is an all Joe Musterka thing. We're going to, we're going to date it every time because the assumptions, the assumptions will change, right? So we made a set of assumptions here on revenue. We'll be making different assumptions as we get more information. But sometimes when people say, "Well, you know, you said it was this and then it was that," it's because we're making educated assumptions based on what information's coming.
So this assumption is with a straight, two and a half growth and no state aid?
No state, no increase of the state aid.
Or regular growth in the city?
Only local receipts grow. Only the local receipts grow, right. We did, the non, with the, the non-statutory local aid accounts, the, there's various like library accounts and veteran services and so on. Some of those, we're plugging in an increased number because we know increased money will come back. Veteran Services has grown quite a bit in terms of our veterans' benefits. We get reimbursed 75%, so you're going to see an increase there. That, I guess, is a state aid account, except that it's not one of the ones that goes back into the budget to fund schools or, you know, it just reimburses us for what we spent. Same with Quinn bill for the police.
Over some of what you've had, only 75 of them.
On the veterans, yeah. And 50 on the, wait, yeah?
What makes up new growth?
New growth is any new building, new improvement, expansion to a home. Somebody puts on a dormer in a new bedroom, that increased the value of the home. That, actually, that's a little, not quite right. An expansion, you build in addition to your home. A new business is built. So the Walgreens will come on the tax rolls next year as new growth. Okay?
The Kentucky Fried Chicken.
The Kentucky Fried Chicken. Wish we could put a little toll booth in that office.
I know.
So trans fats, it's, they're peddling the trans fats inside the LEED-certified building, that kind of adds up. I don't know, they probably don't have trans fats. So anyway...
They're green. They're very...
So this is under no new state aid. This, I did this last week. Well, this, you know, you know that data letter with soundtrack where you close it over your shoulder with the last cracks? That's what you can do with this. Because really, what we're be looking at is more what's on the second graphic, which is...
I noticed you made your graph go down in the negative even more.
Well, because the number was bigger.
I see that.
The number is bigger, so the Excel did it for me. And, and so you can see the growth in revenue at the bottom is a negative 1.8 million dollars. Okay, so then go, so if you go back to that, it's all the same other assumptions, but with 10% local aid. So one thing about 10% local aid cut, that assumes that we get the same cut in Chapter 70 that everybody else gets. I don't think that's a right assumption. I think we'll get a bigger cut in Chapter 70 because we're above net school spending. We are not a poor community in the way a very low property value community is. And those are the folks that the court said that the state has to fund education for. So if you, you know, if you're in, I don't want to pick on any particular city, but if you're in a poor city and you're just at foundation and your tax base can't get you above foundation, the state has to give you one more. Okay, so...
If they get more than 10%.
So, and the 10% is an average. So we all know that average means somebody's below and somebody's above. In 2003, we got a 20% cut in all three of our local aid accounts. And the cities that were not at foundation didn't get a 20% aid cut. And so this is, at this point, this may be the optimistic scenario. 10% might be the optimistic scenario. Now, the MACI said 5% to 10%. So stick with the 10% right now, but we should not fool ourselves. The state's obligation is to the, to the communities that the court has said they have to fund. And we're being funded above foundation, so we're not in that same mode. So you go back to this page now. So what happens on the revenue side? I've added a little, I've added the school 640, which really isn't reflected on here, okay? But on the revenue side, we're saying that we're going to drop, right, by over $2 million, right? So at the bottom of the sheet, you can see it's a 5.3 million dollar deficit, where you're going to drop by $2 million, right? So there's, that's $2 million worth of this deficit, right? 1.2 million of the deficit is the, oh, actually, 600,000 of this deficit is the non-recurring revenue, okay? So now we're up to 2.5 million dollars that we need to balance the budget. Health insurance, I'm assuming a million dollar increase in here. So that means that a million and a half is all the, what we would need to grow the department budgets 3%, right?
Which, what type of stuff?
The health insurance is, that the market has been turning up 10% increases generally.
2.5, what, what was that for?
I'm just backing out the numbers. So if you back out the, if you back out the...
The 2 million in state aid, the 600,000 that we plugged in last year.
And you back out a million dollars in health insurance, you're down to whatever it is, a 1.5, is that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah.
I'm like, yeah. And I never did very well in math in school either. Pretty happy with that. And that, so that leaves us with a million and a half. Now, if you just looked at our new receipts, we're pretty darn close to a million and a half if we just, if we didn't have to worry about health insurance or anything else. But we do, right? We do have to worry about all these other things. So that's why we have this gap. So the struggle over the next couple of months is going to be on the revenue side to try to figure out what we're doing, and on the expense side to try to dramatically reduce our expenses.
So this gap...
And that doesn't include 640. So the true gap is take the 5.3 and add 640. So it's really more like 5.9.
What 640 doesn't include what?
The schools.
Schools. The one-time money that we put in? The one-time money that we put in.
The city, the city's one-time money is reflected where it says stabilization fund up under the revenue, where it says 602, you know, nine and then zero.
Susan, right.
Here, you know, we almost probably should have added a line that says school 640 because, and then a zero over here because that, you used 602, we used 640.
You know what? I'm going to do that and as I'm doing these, I'm trying to get the, I'm trying to refine it a little bit and get it to be, and I may not break it down by departments necessarily, I may break it down on OM and on personnel costs. I'm trying, we're trying to think of a couple of different ways to show it. But you remember a couple of years ago, I had a worksheet that I handed out sort of every meeting showing where the gap was, this was probably four years ago, we kept working on it and shit. So my intent would be, if you're, if it's okay with you at every meeting, to just update you on where we are. We would be doing the same thing at the city council finance meeting.
Just for some feedback, this was really hard for me to follow.
Which one?
I was all good with this stuff.
Right. I just kind of ran through that fast, so let me do it a little bit slower.
You don't have to, I just.
No.
No, that's all right.
I just, and I'm happy to walk it through with anybody who wants. It basically is taking our, our budget categories and growing the personnel side by about 3% and growing the OM, the non-personnel side, by about anywhere from 1 to 2% with the exception of utilities. And if we, if we make those adjustments, how much do they go up? And then we, then we total it all up.
You see that leaves on the left side is actuals and on the right is projected. On the left of the, of the bar is actuals and going out is projected.
But, you know, it's good for me to get feedback on what's not working in terms of telling the story because it, different, you know, different people hear it and see it different ways and I, so I'm just, I'm going to try a couple of different ways because it's pretty dense.
I think the more information you give people, the better.
I think it might be useful, like, these are really good to show the revenue side, to maybe do similar ones.
I have one on the expense side. I, I, the chart kind of, I, I'm not used to the new, I, I, I should have taken the Excel. I could have used the chart section because the new Excel charting, I'm not very good at.
Oh, with Vista, they're very.
Oh, not Vista, but Excel, Excel 2007.
Oh.
So I will work on that because I think it's true and I think that the revenue one is really easy for people to understand.
Yeah.
So I'll work on it.
I like your Christmas colors.
I, well, you know, red, green, I thought we should do that, color of money. So I'll keep, keep people up to date and, but it's, I will say that this is, I've been doing this now for, this is my ninth budget and this is the worst one, by way, by way far, by way far, if that's a English construction. It's, it, you know, so we'll see, we'll see what happens. So we'll take it a day at a time and try to figure it out.
I just wanted to say something. I just wanted to go back to the last meeting when there was the presentation about Jackson Street and JFK. And I wish afterwards, I'd say, you know, maybe it's happened for years, these schools are still stunning.
Yeah.
And so it just feels like it's hard to believe we can do it, but people, where did people put their hats, but it's like the lows and the fishes.
Well, we have a very impressive staff from the custodians and the bus drivers up to the superintendent, we have a great staff, all the way up to down. So, my happiness, reports from, from subcommittees?
We don't have one.
Does anybody have one? Okay, is there any new business anybody feels compelled to introduce? You got discouraged, you can bring Kenny up.
That's the point, really.
Anybody want to move to adjourn?
Yes.
I'm having so much fun.
All in favor?
I don't know.
Okay, thanks.